This conference will now be recorded.
To our meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. And I have one other announcement, it is National Police Week. In 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day in the calendar week in which it falls as National Police Week. In Southway Hall Township, we are very fortunate to have a wonderful police force under the direction of Chief Dorni, and we are very thankful for all of our officers and we thankful for your community service and we wish you all safety as you protect our community. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, courtesy of the floor, this is opportunity for any member of the public to comment on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board this evening? If anyone online, Chris? Thank you.
Is there anyone online that would like to make a comment? Please put it in the chat, we did have to mute everyone in the beginning. I'm not seeing any, anything in the chat.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, we have our meeting minutes from our May 3, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting, they've been distributed in advance to the board for your review. Are there any comments or corrections needed to our meeting minutes? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, ordinances. We have a motion requesting permission to proceed with advertising of said ordinance. An ordinance of the Township of Southway Hall, County of Lehigh, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Part 1 Administrative Legislation of the Codified Ordinances of Southway Hall Township to provide for a new chapter to establish a capital reserve fund and providing for a repealer clause, severability clause, and effective date. And I'll ask our township manager to present.
Thank you. So this ordinance in draft format has been reviewed by both the Budget and Finance Committee as well as the Township Solicitor. And it is ready for advertisement if the board is so inclined. Currently, just to give you some background, the Capital Reserve Fund is funded by carryover revenue of the general fund. This ordinance would now, in lieu of that process, the revenue would be inserted from the general fund directly into the Capital Reserve Fund as budgeted line items. And this would also formalize the process in accordance with the First Class Township Code. The additional overall intent of this ordinance is to build up the fund balance of the Capital Reserve Fund instead of using carryover general fund revenue each year. This ordinance has also created sub-funds of the Capital Reserve Fund for the sewer fund, the water fund, and refuse fund, so that the use of these capital funds are not co-mingled with other funds. This was at the recommendation of our Township Auditor. And then also, the intent for this year's, next year's budget, I should say, is to include a narrative whereby the justification and need for each of the capital expenditures would be included. Therefore, ensuring that we're both justifying the use of the funds as well as explaining to anyone who reads the budget why we are taking on such endeavors. That's pretty much it, is there any questions?
I don't have any questions, just a comment, I want to thank you and the Finance and Budget Committee for bringing this forth for our consideration this evening. I think it's a wonderful idea to have designated funds with capital requests separate for the board's consideration prior to our budget workshops and also for the public. So thank you for all the members involved and staff.
Thank you.
Any board comment? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion?
I move.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Tom. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, Resolution 7A, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Southway Hall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the purchase of aggregate and anti-skid products through the Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Program. Tom, will you be presenting that as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So during the April 19th Board of Commissioners meeting, the governing body had rejected both the bituminous asphalt as well as the aggregate bid submissions. So we had then asked for authorization to use Co-Stars prices for bituminous asphalt. This resolution now does the same for aggregate, which is stone and anti-skid and other sand type products. So this is budgeted under regular patching as well as a capital line item. So I'd ask for a motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you, Tom, are there any questions or comments on this resolution?
Just a quick comment, I don't know, Tom, or maybe Herb, do we know what the savings on this would be offhand? From the last, the bids that we rejected?
This one's not much of a savings, it's pretty much a wash for the stone.
It, the, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, the primary bulk of the savings was with the asphalt, that was a little over $60,000.
Thank you.
Any other board comment? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said resolution? Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 7B, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Southway Hall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, to approve the proposed traffic calming policy. Tom, I'll ask you to present again.
Yes, thank you. So in the interim time period since we put this agenda together, we did seek the input of LTAP consultant Patrick Wright from the Local Technical Assistance Program on our draft traffic calming policy. And in lieu of adopting tonight, we would like to work through comments that he submitted to us. There's actually a new PennDOT traffic calming regulation coming out in the fall, which he gave us a preview on, and we'd like to incorporate his comments into that, into our policies, that we're actually ahead of it. So I would respectfully request to table this matter for tonight to allow Dave Manhart, Chris Stroller, Herb Bender, and I to continue to work on this. And then come back to you once we've taken all of Mr. Wright's comments that are, again, consistent with the new policies that PennDOT is putting together, that they are putting together for later this year.
Excellent. Any board comment? Any from the public? Any to motion to table?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Tom. Moving on to Agenda Item 7C, we have a resolution granting a certain review and approval requirements of the Southway Hall Township Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance for a revised plan entitled Lehigh Valley Health Network CH 1503 Neuro Rehab Patio. And Greg, I will call on you to please present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is an application to further develop the property located at 1503 North Cedarcrest Boulevard. This application was approved by the board back on October 19th of last year. At that time, the plan proposed to construct a neuro rehabilitation patio in a grass area on the southwest corner of the 1503 building. The original plan proposed an offset for the additional impervious surface by creating five additional parking islands in the existing parking lot. In April of 2023, the applicant submitted a revised plan which no longer proposed the offsets. So this would actually be increasing the impervious. Impervious surface. So staff opined that the plan was sufficiently different from the first one to require reconsideration and reapproval by the board. Chris Brown is here, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Greg. What is the recommendation of the Community Development Department for this?
To go ahead and approve it.
And is there any engineering comment?
No, well, there was a minor change to not create the grass island, it still falls under the exemption for a drainage plan based upon the requirements, the ordinance, and LVPC. So we see no reason that this shouldn't move.
Very good. And is there any comment from our township manager before I open the questions to the board?
Not at this time.
Are there any comments or questions from the board?
I just had one comment. I actually want to tell you that I really love this idea, I think it's a real win for the community and to rehab patients to get back into the activities of their daily lives. And I just, I love the use. I was also going to ask Tony if he had any comments, but you asked Diane, so I appreciate that. And I guess you're okay with it, Greg, we don't need to punt this back to planning for any kind of other input, do we? This is okay.
No, this is, this is so de minimis. The only reason it's coming back is, one of the things we are tracking is the impervious surface. To go from a zero additional square feet of impervious surface to 4,000, I think, is just mainly a bookkeeping item, but we do want to make sure that the proper plan is approved for the record.
Great, thank you so much, because whenever I hear an increase in impervious, I get a little nervous, but I have assurance that it's okay, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board comments? Any from the public? Anything online, Chris?
No comments online, we ask that you please mute yourselves until you wish to make a comment, and you can enter into the chat if you would like me to read your comment aloud, or I can unmute you. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said resolution?
Make them.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you very much. Good luck with your project. Moving on to Agenda Item 7D, we have a resolution extending conditional offer of employment for the entry level position of patrol officer in the Township's Police Department to candidate number 00759, conditioned upon the individual satisfactorily completing medical and psychological examinations to confirm their fitness for duty. And I'll call on our township police chief, Glenn Dorni.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly, this is just another process item, working our way down a list to try to fill vacancies on the department, and candidate 00759 is the next eligible candidate on the list, so we'd like to proceed with at least extending the conditional offer to start a background investigation on this candidate.
Very good, thank you, chief. Are there any board comments or questions? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
Some move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. Good luck. Moving on to Agenda Item 7E, we have a resolution appointing Todd Farringer to the Southway Hall Township Planning Commission. We did hold a public meeting last week, the board interviewed one candidate for our vacancy on the Planning Commission, and that was Mr. Todd Farringer. I'm going to open it up to the board for any comments or questions before we proceed.
I do have a comment. This is actually the second time that Todd has applied for this position, so I was happy to see him come back and not give up. And him not giving up, to me, is very positive. He wants this. I think his background in emergency services will bring a unique perspective to the board, a very welcome perspective. And he has a working knowledge of the township, and I would certainly be happy to have him on board. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hodges. I would also say, the comment that I recall from his interview that impressed me was his willingness to seek opportunity for training, for the position to learn more through LVPC or other avenues. I certainly did admire his willingness to do so.
I agree with Commissioner Kelly. As we'll hear later today in the meeting, there are quite a few vacancy positions on several boards. I think that when we can see, and I'm going to speak for both items E and F, when we have individuals come out and go out of their way to come out to be interviewed by the BOC, who are willing to make the commitment for the township, some of them don't have the, all the experience that maybe we would all like, but we all started somewhere. And Todd was certainly willing, as Diane said, to learn, and I think it's important when we can get township residents to get involved in the township. As Monica said, he's come out several times for interviews, he's got a nice background, so I certainly wholeheartedly support Todd for the Planning Commission, and I thank him and others for coming out to be interviewed and take that opportunity.
Well said, Commissioner Kennedy.
I'll echo the comments of the three of you, and just add that Todd has served on a number of our volunteer boards and commissions over the years, and I think his level of commitment is certainly exceptional. And it's not just because he's the only applicant for the position, but I really can't think of anybody better to bring a new and balanced perspective to the Planning Commission, so I would absolutely support the appointment of Todd Farringer to the Planning Commission.
Thank you all for your comments, are there any public comments before we go for vote? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with a resolution appointing Todd Farringer to the Southway Hall Township Planning Commission?
I will make that motion.
Second, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Congratulations to Todd. Moving on to Agenda Item 7F, similar to the one we just dealt with, we have a resolution appointing Adil Ahmad as an alternate member to the Southway Hall Township Civil Service Commission. One point I want to emphasize for Mr. Ahmad, he volunteered to come in for an interview as a spinoff from having attended our Adult Police Academy and having an opportunity to interface with our police chief and our officers and other members of the community, and it sparked an interest in him to want to serve, to help assisting our police department through civil service. So I encourage any residents listening, if you're interested at all in volunteering for the township, or at least to also get some information and background on our wonderful police department, certainly do get in touch, we do have Police Academy for adult and youth, which is a wonderful opportunity. So thank you to Mr. Ahmad for interviewing with us. Are there any board comments on this resolution?
Mr. Ahmad is recommended as an alternate member for the Southway Hall Township Civil Service, and I see Mr. Quinn in the audience tonight, so I'm sure that then he can take him under his wings and educate him and help him in any way possible, and get him up to speed as an alternate. So thank you, I wish you would do that, Vinny.
Any other board comment?
What I liked about his interview is he liked the idea of collaboration and working together, and I think that's very important, so I'll wholeheartedly support him.
I'll agree, and I'll add two points, his experience working with a number of state agencies, I think he'll bring a unique perspective on that. And also, he understands the role of the Civil Service Commission, but he's not afraid to brainstorm and think about ideas to some of the challenges facing the profession of policing as a whole. So I think in terms of, we talk about recruitment and retention being two challenges of the profession, and Southway Hall's not an exception to that, I think he would be a major help to our Civil Service Commission and eventually to our police department as well.
Well said, thank you all for your comments. Is there any public comment before we proceed for a vote? Anything online? Do I have a motion to approve with said resolution to appoint Adil Ahmad as the alternate member to the Southway Hall Township Civil Service Commission?
Some move.
I'll make a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Welcome, Mr. Ahmad, we look forward to you serving the township. Moving on to Agenda Item 7G, we have a resolution authorizing township staff to apply for funding through the Pennsylvania Walk Works Program. Chris Stroller, will you be presenting this evening?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Staff is requesting a resolution to apply for $25,000 from the Pennsylvania Walk Works Program, which is funded through the Department of Health, and this is in support of an active transportation plan, bicycle pedestrian accessibility planning for what we're hoping will be a larger, more comprehensive transportation plan for the township, addressing many of the issues that we talked about during the Township Comprehensive Plan. The reason for the resolution is that it's asked directly in the grant application that a resolution be passed, and we would be looking at incorporating this as part of those larger planning efforts.
Excellent, thank you, Chris, I appreciate the fact that you've seeked a grant for helping the township with pedestrian safety and alternate transportation routes, and that it's another aspect of the comp plan that we're working through, so thank you for continuing to bring that to the board. Are there any board comments or questions?
Of course, just, I didn't see it, this is not a match, is it?
So this would be, it's not a match, we're eligible for this amount of money without a match, but it would be part of a larger project, we're hoping, we are also looking at, later in the year, looking for some federal funding for the rest of the program.
We'll also be using and tracking in-house time worked on this as well, so that could be used towards a match if need be.
Excellent. Any other board comment? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution? Second, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, motions. 8A, we have a motion requesting permission to award bid with regard to the line striping project. On Herb Bender, our Director of Operations.
All right, two bids were received and opened on Friday, April 28th at 10:00 a.m. For the line striping bid on behalf of the Lehigh Valley Cooperative Purchasing Council, this bid was advertised twice in local publication as required by law. Thirteen potential bidders downloaded and received bid documents from the PennBid website. A bid tabulation is attached in the packet. DeAngelo Contracting Service responded with the lowest pricing and has been vetted by staff. This company is currently contracted for line striping work with PennDOT and Luzerne County. Both references have stated they had multiple contracts with DeAngelo and are satisfied with their work performed. The fourteen participating members of this cooperative bid, including Southway Hall Township, have been notified of the results and are willing to proceed. We are respectfully requesting the board to approve the award of the line striping contract to DeAngelo Contracting Services.
Thank you, Herb. Any board comments on this?
Just, have we ever used them before? Just curious.
Not since I've been here, we have not.
I'm happy that they've had such good references, though.
Yes, they did, everyone spoke very highly of them.
Yeah.
I know Donna asked a lot of questions to Luzerne and to the state, and they are both very pleased with the work that they do.
That's, that's a comfort, thank you. And thanks for the comparison with the bids, it's always nice to see how the two bids work out side by side, so I appreciate that.
I have to give Donna the credit for that, she put it together.
Please pass it on, thank you.
Yeah, just another comment to follow up on, Commissioner Hodges, it's always very helpful, all the information you've been supplying in our packet, certainly the references and the comparisons, you make it very easy for us to look at the information and digest what's before us before we vote, so thank you to Donna and staff.
Thank you.
Any other board comment? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Good luck with that project. Moving on to Agenda Item 8B, we have a motion to approve the selection of design consultant and enter into a professional services agreement with regard to request for proposal entitled "Southway Hall Township Professional Engineering Consulting Services for Covered Bridge Park Development Phase C, Selection of Design Consultant." Tom Petrucci?
Yes, thank you. So I'm requesting official action to award the design consultant contract professional services agreement to Michael Baker International, following the RFP opening that occurred via the PennBid system on May 5th. To give some background, four proposals were received, with Michael Baker coming in at the low end, $40,888. Bowler Engineering came in at the high end, $61,000, and Barry Isaac and HRG were right around $57,000 to $59,000. So Michael Baker was the low proposal while still meeting all the requirements of the bid. So what this, this is for is, the scope of work includes the following, further development of Covered Bridge Park, to work to include construction of a pavilion, Americans with Disabilities Act access landscaping project sign and other related site improvements. This project is a little complex due to the fact that the park is located entirely in the floodplain. So during the 2023 budget, $13,000 in engineering was allocated toward this project. It's our understanding that that was meant to be an initial placeholder. So with the contract price coming in, coming in at $40,088, the budget would need to account for that either this year using general fund money, and we are tracking under budget on that, or we could come back next year for 24 and a budget additional capital expenditures. I do want to remind the board that this is a active grant in the amount of $98,300, which we then do have a $98,300 matching funds requirement. And additionally, we do have a resident in the area that has agreed to provide a $50,000 in-kind donation to the work related to the pavilion slab and the pavilion itself. So basically, I'm asking for approval with the understanding that it's, you know, we would start work up to $13,000 and then we would reevaluate later this year, if necessary.
Very good, thank you, Tom. Can you just comment briefly on the challenges with the floodplain issue?
Yes, so with putting in a permanent pavilion, we need to make sure that the structure is anchored properly, that it's not going to, and that it's built with weather resistant materials. So it's also, the fact that Michael Baker submitted this proposal is very helpful in the sense that it's right near where we are putting the Jordan Creek Greenway project. So I think the fact that they are, the engineering firm that worked on that project has all the surveys already done and can work around that project is especially helpful, knowing that there's a, there's a number of permitting requirements attached to that project as well. So we must obtain a local floodplain permit, which meets FEMA requirements for the pavilion. We may need an obstruction permit from DEP, we're hoping to not, but I believe we will. So we don't believe we'll need an MTEDS permit, because we're going to be under the disturbance threshold, but again, we want to do this the right way, make sure we're meeting all the requirements, and that's why we went out to RFP.
Excellent, thank you very much. I'll open it up to any comments or questions from the board.
I don't want it to end up down in Allentown, you know, after we build it.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
It's not a portable structure.
No, no, it's not.
Any other comments from the board? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion?
Make them.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Tom, and all staff involved. Moving on to Agenda Item 8C, we have a motion requesting permission to proceed with selection of Transportation Construction Manager and Transportation Construction Inspector for the TASSA-funded Jordan Creek Greenway project. Tom, if you'd present?
Yes, thank you. So Chris Stroller and I had worked on sending out statements of interest to, we sought proposals from qualified firms, and qualified firms meaning they meet all PennDOT requirements to provide construction services on our federally funded PennDOT TASSA Jordan Creek Greenway project. So part-time inspection services will be required for the project, including, again, the aforementioned Transportation Construction Manager and one Transportation Construction Inspector. Qualified inspectors are required to have knowledge of PennDOT ECMS construction inspection and documentation procedures. They must also have PennDOT concrete and asphalt by two-minute certifications. Three firms submitted statements of interest packages. Upon review of the submissions, it's the recommendation of township management and staff to proceed with notifying PennDOT that the township will select traffic planning and design as the preferred transportation construction manager and transportation construction inspector for the project. From there, PennDOT then confirms the selection. So we don't have the final say. But assuming they meet all their requirements, which we believe they will, we must then utilize the rates for time and materials reimbursables that are affixed and approved by PennDOT in accordance with the grant requirements. So with that, I would seek a motion to forward this, our selection, to PennDOT specifically, Kristi Barry from PennDOT.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Are there any board questions, comments?
I do have a quick comment. I noted that they have inspected the Greenway in Whitehall and also the city of Allentown. So I just wanted to comment that it's nice to have that continuity. So.
And they also did it for our project here as well.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other board comment? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 8D, we have a motion requesting permission to proceed with advertising of specifications regarding residential municipal solid waste collection, disposal, and recycling services for South Whitehall Township. Tom, if you'd present?
Thank you. So requesting official action in the form of a motion to advertise the availability of the public bid for the solid waste recycling contract, which will commence January 1st, 2024. However, I want to attach a condition that the solicitor must approve the final text before it's sent out. And with the understanding as well that if there are any substantive changes as a result of that solicitor review, I will come back to the board at the next meeting in lieu of proceeding. So, but basically, to break down the program changes without getting into the minutia of the text that we have reviewed at the last meeting include elimination of the Christmas Tree Collection, which would then be conducted by Public Works, lowering the number of bulk item collection periods from once per week to once per month, including stickers. All would be done on the same day, eliminating the annual sticker for grass, providing an alternate bid option for residents to buy stickers online through the hauler. And then the actual charge set forth in the bid would be assessed to the residents. So we have alternate bids in sections set forth in the bid that would allow for that to occur as an option if it makes fiscal sense. And then in accordance with comments during the last meeting, the contractor would provide an educational informational PDF at least once per year, including right recycling information with a calendar. And then it'll actually, the PDF, the intent is that to provide the full scope of work and collection services to be provided, as well as a map of the service area. We also confirmed the deadline of when the contractor delivers toters to residents as one week. That's already in the current contract, which we discovered upon further review. It's not really being adhered to at this one week, so we added that to the list of contract violations. We built in a specific requirement for the lifetime expectancy of the toter, including a 10-year warranty. And we also put in 30-yard rolloff dumpster for the Arden Garden Center for the materials that are not able to be accepted. We have in for a dedicated local customer service line with a phone number or total free number specific to South Whitehall Township with adequate staffing, so that people, when they call, are able to get a live operator. And then we built into the contract the parameters for the age of the equipment that would be acceptable. We did discuss at the last meeting having hazardous waste collection. That was taken out due to the fact that it's probably going to be cost prohibitive.
Thank you, Tom. And just for the public's knowledge, when we reviewed this at our last meeting, I know that I asked the question, how you arrived at the changes to this contract? And you did report to us that that was based on resident feedback and as well as staff input. So thank you for taking that all into account to deliver the high-quality services to our residents.
Yeah, thank you. I want to thank the staff that is, you know, they're the ones that hear the concerns, inquiries from residents on a daily basis. So we really wanted to make sure that we address those concerns that they hear so that, you know, we can provide a better service to our residents.
Absolutely. Thank you. Are there any board comments?
Yeah, I do have a comment. Tom, on the item on lowering the number of bulk item collection time period from one per week to one per month, just briefly, if I put out one item now, which I'm allowed to do in the course of a month, that's four items. And basically, my question is, do I put out four items at once a month now instead of one item once a month? And then the other comment about the online buying the stickers, I didn't read all 94 pages. I don't want to mislead you that I did, but I didn't see anything in there about that. So if there was a bulk item, how many per month, or from one to four, or, and also the stickers? Could you just address that?
Yes. The way it's written right now, it would be once a month, one bulk item. And then you could buy, purchase additional stickers for one sticker per each bulk item. And then that would be done all in the same collection day. But the base contract would be one bulk item per month.
Could you direct me, this doesn't always go that fast, what a cost per bulk item would be?
I could not at this time because it would be built into the next, the vendor would have to provide that in the next contract.
So we're not going to designate what it is? It's the, that they would designate?
They designate. And that's the way this current contract structured it as well.
So from experience, having 15 apartment houses with multiple waste haulers, I don't have one, we have multiple for different properties, that value can, you know, they'll charge me $30 for a item. And then I scream, and all of a sudden, my contract reads 15. And they said, well, it is what it is. If you don't like it, I'll go to somebody else, is what I tell them, because I'm not on a contract. But I'm just curious that that number can vary substantially. And they don't look at a bulk item as a small table or a large desk. It's a bulk item. So I'd be curious as to how they're going to, what they consider the bulk item.
Yes.
And what that cost would be because?
You articulated it well. And actually, the definition includes as well, like a piece of furniture, actually a tire, you could, you would then, if you put out, for example, one tire, that counts as your bulk item as well, and under the way the current contract is written. So, yeah, like furniture, you know, and then we also, you have the freon removal service for appliances. That's built in there as well as a separate purchase item for a sticker. But, yeah, so generally, anything like, you know, a couch, coffee table, stuff like that. Yeah.
And mattresses would have to have a cover of?
Have the cover on it because of bedbugs, yes.
Yeah, go to Home Depot and wherever, pick it up.
Any other comments?
A quick question, Tom. You could probably answer this for me. The toters that we have now, are they generic toters? I'm looking at page 37 about collection carts. If we do change vendors, what's the probability of getting new ones? Or the ones we have, would they still be able to be used?
You would still use the ones that we have as long as they say South Whitehall Township? We'd have to work with the current vendor as to whether the ones that say Waste Management, whether they would just have to remain in place, or are they, you know, can we swap them out? We are still working with the current vendor for that. But it would be similar to the way it is now. We're not, we wouldn't, the intent wouldn't be to purchase all new toters for this contract due to the costs. Residents would be purchasing the toters on an as-needed basis.
Thank you.
But we have to be careful, though, if a resident, and I have to, I had, I had to purchase one because mine got destroyed. So, you know, so basically, if they would come and collect the ones that are out there, residents have paid for their.
Right.
No, who, you know, I know mine picked up because I've already paid it. I own it. Not, it wasn't just delivered by South Whitehall, the second time. First time it was.
Correct. And we want to work through that with them so that if they do collect them, that we would then have replacements. Otherwise, we'll just keep it, you'll just keep them. They may not be able to accommodate that where they would replace with the official South Whitehall Township ones. So in which case, you would just, you know, we would be pushing to have you keep, each of the residents keep what you already purchased.
Yeah.
Any from the public? If you'd just come to the microphone, please, and turn on the microphone, the little green button will light up for you. Just give us your name and address, please.
I'm Don Schetzley. I live at 1411 Hampton Road. Is this supposed to help the residents by what you're doing? How is this supposed to help us? Right now, we could put bulk stuff every week. Right now, you're saying we can only do it once a month? We can only do a certain amount of things? Is it saving township money, or what's the advantage?
Yeah, the intent was to try to lower the cost of the contract because unfortunately, the cost of the contract will almost certainly go up this time because of inflation factors and cost of fuel and so forth. So we were trying to find ways to, for example, eliminating the Christmas tree collection, trying to find ways to lower the cost of the contract so it wouldn't be such an increase. Bulk items was identified by staff as something that's not always used by residents. But if there's a concern, we can certainly adjust that.
It just seemed like this isn't going to make any of the people who live here happy, right? Compared to what they're used to now with Christmas trees or bulks or?
You'd still have your Christmas trees collected just by Public Works instead of the hauler. So we're trying to lower the cost. So you'd still have, you'd still have that service, just not by the hauler.
And whatever the bulk is, it'll be a different cost based on, we don't know what. I don't know, it just seemed like to me it's, nothing's going to help us. You're going to drop our taxes any by doing this, or?
Well, this isn't funded by taxes. It would be the fees. So you already pay the fees, right? So it wouldn't, it wouldn't have anything to do with your taxes.
Okay, I just, okay, that's fine. I just don't think it sounds like it's a good deal for the people who live here. And I think that when people find out that the changes, the rules we have, it's not going to make them happy. But I'm okay.
Yeah, it's all we're trying to do, sir, is offset the cost of the contract. So we don't see such a huge increase to the residents for the trash collection.
And we kept, I would say, 95% of the current services in the contract. This is just one area where we're trying to lower costs. I know Mr. Kennedy had similar comments, or you were concerned about lowering it as well. Maybe what we could do is, I could structure it where they could provide pricing on doing it either monthly or the current structure, so that you would have an alternate bid. So that way, we can do a comparison of the pricing. That address your concern, sir?
I think when we look at South Whitehall costs overall, be it water, sewer, refuge, I have to say, I think we're very, very competitive and very much in line. I mean, all of our bills, we certainly look at the taxpayers. We all have to pay them. And we certainly have to look at that. And I think that the township administration by Public Works picking up Christmas trees, it's still going to be picked up. It's just from somebody else is picking it up. That's a savings to us as residents versus going into the waste hauler contract. I'm sorry? It, we're on a different subject. You're right. But some of that, sir, you have to look back at LCA, which is Lehigh County Authority, billing the township additional dollars. That's not, that's not a gain for the township. That becomes a net, passing it through. So if LCA is hitting us, the township with a 7%, 8%, 9% increase, and we hit the residents with that, that's a pass-through. There's no gain to the township for that. None of us like it, but that gripe should be with LCA, not with the township. Because unfortunately, if we didn't pass that through, then ultimately, you'd see increases down the road in other things. So it's a no-win situation. But LCA is passing increases on to us, which we in turn pass on to the residents. So there's no gain to the township.
With respect to the trash contract, could we potentially build that in to see what the cost difference would be monthly versus weekly? Because I think to Mr. Schetzley's question, if, if we're trying to limit the cost of the overall contract, but that bulk item collection weekly versus monthly isn't a huge cost increase, maybe we could still keep the weekly collection if the cost isn't all that great in a difference between the two.
Yeah, we could do it as an alternate bid, weekly versus monthly.
I think that's a good idea.
Just because if it isn't a huge increase, and obviously, the residents, they would prefer to keep the weekly. It's not that, you know, the cost is not all that different. Might be the way to go.
Yeah.
And Herb, can you just review the Christmas tree changes that we're discussing? So the public's aware.
Yes, the Christmas trees will be picked up as normal for the full month of January. So January 2nd, because we're off on the 1st, all the way to the 30th or 31st, however many days are in January. And we could even take it on a little longer if we see them because we will have a night shift onboard here because, due to snow. So we will make sure all the trees get picked up, and then we will actually run them through the chipper and use those as our mulch again next year instead of having the purchase mulch.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Well, so Tom, would you just review that the contract we're currently involved in now is ending, and we must go out to rebid?
Yeah, I think that's an important part to mention, that Waste Management, under the current contract provisions, elected to notify the township that they were not renewing the contract for '24. Because honestly, the way it was bid, it wasn't cost-effective for them any longer. So that shows, that shows, you know, the residents and the governing body that honestly, the cost is, they're going to go up. Because even under the current contract, it wasn't enough to cover the cost of their operating costs. So that's where we were trying to evaluate it, to try to make sure that we're providing the base services, but still looking at the cost. So having the alternate bid options as articulated by the board tonight, I think that will try to assuage your concerns and probably, probably the concerns of others as well.
And when all the bids come in, we could stick with Waste Management if that's.
If they bid.
If they choose to bid, so.
So you have to go with the lowest responsible bidder.
Yeah.
And that's a public. Sir, can you come to the microphone? Because those people listening virtually will not be able to hear your question. Thank you.
I don't think that people have a problem doing bulk if they know what it's going to cost them. If I can do it this week, and this is what it costs me for whatever it is, I don't think they have a problem with that. I just think if we just tell them now, you can only do it once a month, and this is, and we don't know what the cost is, the unknown might confuse them more than.
Your comments are well taken. Thank you.
Yes, very good. Thank you for sharing your comments. Any other public comment? Anything online?
If anyone would like to make a comment online, please unmute yourselves now, or you can state it in the chat, and I can read your comment for you. I'm not seeing any comments.
Thank you. Hearing and seeing no comments at this time, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 8E, Riverside Drive Multimodal Carrot Project, public comment. And Chris Stroller, will you be presenting?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So this is a pretty high-profile redevelopment project in the city of Allentown and Whitehall Township. Usually, with these types of projects, they're actually opening up the tip, the Transportation Improvement Program regionally to fund this. So there is a public comment period. Usually, if it was outside of the township, we wouldn't really make a comment on something like this. But due to the high nature of the high-profile nature of this project, staff was looking at it, and we would like to comment on the fact that the part of this project, which is the redevelopment of a former rail line to create a road and close a significant gap in the DNL Trail, it is also pretty significant for the regional trail network. for the regional trail network. And the Jordan Creek Greenway Trail in Allentown is several blocks away. And being that the Jordan Creek Greenway is fairly important to this township, staff would like to essentially get this on the radar for our regional partners and our other municipal partners to show the significance of connecting the Jordan Creek Greenway to the DNL Trail in the future. This is a, a pretty well supported project. And the comments in the memorandum are essentially just to be submitted as part of the public engagement period to say that we would like to see future efforts through these partners to consider connections to the Jordan Creek Greenway as part of the trail connection efforts for this project in the immediate area. So no official action for the township besides just making the comment.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Are there any board comments on the public comment for this item? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with public comment on this item?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Chris. Moving on to agenda item nine, correspondence and information items upcoming meetings. And Tom, if you'd update us? Computer issues. I can read them if you are not able to. Of course. Upcoming meetings for the township, which are always available on our township website, tomorrow, Thursday, May 18th at 7:30 PM is our planning commission meeting. Monday, May 22nd at 10 AM is our landscape and shade tree commission meeting here at the township building. Wednesday, May 24th, the zoning hearing board meeting has been canceled. Monday, May 29th, the office, township offices will be closed in observance, observation of Memorial Day holiday. We do wish everyone a safe holiday. On Monday, June 5th at 7 PM, our public safety commission will meet. And Wednesday, June 7th at 7 PM will be our next Board of Commissioners meetings. Again, please always visit our website for updates. Moving on to direction discussion items, agenda item 10A, change of township and fire companies wireless services. Tom, would you present?
Thank you. First of all, I just would like to thank Donna Zacharou for putting all this together. She worked directly with the executive office and the police department to make sure that we were getting the most effective and efficient services for our wireless, from our wireless provider. So to summarize, we researched three different options, T-Mobile, FirstNet, which is an extension of AT in T for first responders, and Verizon, which is our current provider. We do experience service issues with Verizon at the township building and surrounding areas from time to time, quite frequently actually, a number of dropped calls and so forth. So we are looking to request permission to, or we, we're asking to proceed with, with switching to T-Mobile for, and we've tested phones and equipment of T-Mobile. And we actually have service throughout the entire building. And the only thing that we cannot switch is the police car computers because they have SIM cards that are already built in. But to give you some background on this, the township is currently billed approximately $3,600 a month. And then the fire company is approximately $1,200 a month through Verizon wireless. The quote received by T-Mobile is comparably a pretty small savings for the township and the fire companies. The approximate combined amount would be $4,182.48. However, importantly, T-Mobile is offering three months of free service, free phone cases. So we have to factor in those savings as well. But primarily, this, this decision is based on service, not necessarily savings because of the aforementioned service issues, especially with public safety being involved with the police. If they can't make calls and calls are dropping, that, that's a problem that we just simply cannot afford. I would seek a motion to proceed with switching to T-Mobile.
Excellent. Thank you for presenting this and for vetting out the different companies for us. Anecdotally, I was driving just through the township today and dropped a call twice with Verizon. So thank you for bringing this to our attention. And I agree, our public safety, first responders need to have reliable service. Are there any board comments?
The one, the one other thing is, we did, we are going to keep the SCADA system for the water system monitoring with Verizon because that is set up as a private network. But we did test the T-Mobile phones with it, and we can still receive the alarms from that system onto the T-Mobile phones.
My only question, is this a contract that we're entering into if we were to find out six months from now, if we make this change, that there's an issue with service?
No, it's not a contract in that sense. It's only if, if some of the devices have like, you know, a certain amount of usage, you might have to buy out the rest of that. But you, you can switch services at any time. For example, we're switching from Verizon. We had no contract with them.
Thank you. Any other board comment? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the change to the township and fire company's wireless services?
Make them.
Second, motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. We have nothing under old business. Agenda item 12, courtesy of the floor, again, another opportunity for anyone in the public to address the board on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone present, present who would like to address the board? Anyone else online, Chris?
Not seeing anyone online. If you do wish to make a comment, courtesy of the floor, please unmute yourself, or you can enter it into the chat and I can read your comment for you.
We don't have any. Moving on to agenda item 13, I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and disbursements.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no executive session this evening. I need a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. This motion is adjourned.